To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the truth and justice for all.
We'll pass these mics.
All right, first into this discussion, Viagel.
We have a board calendar review. I don't have anything to highlight, but you do see your 1920 calendar, and Salt has had the opportunity to take a look at it and update it, so all the reports that we're reporting throughout the year fall on the correct month. Other than that, it really reflects the work that the Board did during the Board advance in August.
Any questions?
Also during the Board advance in August, you brought up the idea of having a civility policy, and the Board wanted to initiate that. So you have lots of ideas which we gathered and then pulled together for this, and Debbie is going to share it.
Yes, I will.
It's seven six.
I'm working. So, good evening. As Marcy said, during the Board advance or following that, Marcy indicated to me that the Board is interested in having a civility policy and inclusion to that. Of course, Marcy supports that idea. So what we did, or what I did, is gather some civility policies or similar from neighboring districts, and that's what I wanted to look up right now, just to remind myself, to share with you, that we looked at examples such as Clover Park, Lake Washington, and Edmonds. In pulling some of those together, what I like to do is go through and take what I think are the pieces that work best that we want to incorporate into our policy, as well as writing some of it ourselves. And one of the pieces that, in talking with Marcy, we felt was extremely critical is having our culture of caring highlighted in the policy, which really is well-aligned with civility, of course. So this policy is a draft for Orting. It's not one that would replace another existing policy. There used to be a, I believe it was called Employee Conduct Policy that was to put forward, but it really was, in my recollection, more aligned with "don't smoke on the property," those types of things. So this is really about our character, our behavior, and how we interact. Highlighted in this policy, I just wanted to, again, state that only in the first sentence, we highlighted that it's really about a culture of learning and caring. We talked about safety being our number-one priority, which of course it is, and that's also in there, being safe, civil, respectful, and of course, we want a welcoming environment. One of the things in the middle of the policy, it's below numbers one, two, and three in that next paragraph, it talks about, "We are committed to supporting the expectations in this policy," and that's something that we would bond together and ensure that it's being followed, and again, contributing to that culture, to our culture in the Orting School District. Down under definitions, you'll see in the secondary there, "traits of civility include," but not limited to. We included the characteristics that you'll see when looking at the Character Strong Curriculum, but also they are, they're those that, we just really feel like, nobody can argue that people should be kind. Nobody should, you know, can argue that people should be patient. And so those kind of characteristics that we really can utilize and get forward in our district to help us build that, continue to build that character and have a strong foundation. One of the things that I did see in another policy, and so we, you know, we borrow and bring forward, is down where the asterisk is on uncivil conduct, there, while it's slightly worded to mean, slightly changed to mean our need, I thought it was a really good idea in one of the neighboring districts where they have something that puts a clarifier in there about, that it does not include the expression of controversial or differing viewpoints, because what a boring world it would be if we all had to think and act the same. So we wanted to put that in there, that there are times where we do, as humans, have differing opinions and viewpoints, and as long as they're presented in a respectful manner, that that's our ability to have conversation and build additional thoughts and have resources. In the back, it closes with a couple of pieces, and that is conflict resolution, just giving employees, our staff and our employees, the ability to understand that, of course, we want people to resolve their concerns. We, as adults, we talk about that all the time. If you have a problem with someone, to be sure, and talk to that person. But there are times where people don't feel comfortable. Something maybe went a little too far, and it hadn't stopped, and so we've given them some additional resources to talk to a school administrator and/or immediate supervisor, and then, of course, in my role within Human Resources, as their chief officer, I would be a resource as well, or a department would. And then reminding people that if someone does bring forward a complaint, that there would be no retaliation. In closing, I just wanted to let you know that we've redigged to the legal and cross-references. I looked through our existing policies, and because this is brand-new and we didn't have a model for it, I brought forward cross-references of areas like hip, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, areas where sometimes we see people who are acting in a way that isn't civil because of, we all have differences, and instead, we need to solve those. So, you know, legal references, I looked those up today as a reminder, because this has been written for a couple of weeks now, and they both have to do with hip or harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So those are the references that I recommend, that we consider as part of this policy. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
You authored this document, correct?
It's, they aren't all my words, but yes, I did put it together.
I just wanted, based on the Board retreat or the Board advance that we had when we were talking about this originally, that this would be a document that would be in place that would assist you in doing your job as far as employing that element.
Yes. It would be a tool that we could use as supervisors across the district in addition in Human Resources, and really, not only embedding this as a culture in our district, but also holding people accountable.
Debbie, I want to thank you for, thank you so much for work.
We can pass, maybe we pass that microphone on that.
We're all going to get saved.
Is that okay if I do this?
Yes.
Well, Debbie, I want to thank you for putting this together and really listening, and then comparing other districts' civility policies, and providing us with such a great document here. I had talked about this during our retreat during the summertime, and it's so cool to see that now it's in effect. A question that I have for you is how are we going to communicate this with our employees? We have a lot of employees that are part-time, and then we also have employees that have been here for a long time. So how do we communicate this with our staff?
So, thank you. One of the ways that we communicate policies is really looking at the policy and who it affects, and we, as employees, are all responsible to adhering to all of the policies, but there are some that are far more targeted. For example, a curriculum policy where Steve may take it to principals and work with certificated staff on that. This one, I haven't talked with Marcy yet to see what our plan is for that, but I would say that my opinion is it affects all of our employees, and we would do best to communicate it to everyone. So I believe that we would take, it's probably unimaginable, but I'm just, I'm watching Marcy, seeing if she's nodding, or going like this. But I would imagine this would not only be an email out to employees, because it is so important, and I think we can word it in a way that really honors the fact that we are looking to build a good culture in Orting, but also part of the quick look, can also, within the quick look, it could certainly have a link that goes back to the policy when it's approved. And I do believe that we can also embed this into our employee orientation. Whenever we do new hiring and talking with policies, I think it would be a critical cornerstone of what we talk about with employees.
And how do we include this with part-time employees? Like, for instance, like during the summertime, how do we introduce this to?
Every single employee that we have, and we'll have to think about how that works with coaches specifically, that every single employee, whether they are substitutes, part-time or full-time, they go through a touch point with Human Resources where we do have, we go through hiring forms, where it's appropriate, we talk about benefits. And we also have been talking more and more, in fact, as recent as yesterday and on Monday, about how we can be sure that we have as part of our checklist that we're going over critical policies, too. So I do believe that we have the opportunity to, and the responsibility, to touch point with every single person that's coming on board. That was a long way of saying, "We gotcha."
Well, Debbie, this lands in the Human Resources realm, so thank you for taking the lead on that policy. And I want to thank Salt and you each take the lead on policies that relate particularly to your areas, and I take the ones that relate particularly to my areas. So thank you for leading that and communicating it out. Certainly. All right, land rezoning. So I've been working on our long-range facility plans and land issues. We have the Orgo Road property, which is 22.9 acres. We call it the Lions' property. It's currently used as soccer fields. So I wanted to look, as we're looking out at our long-range facility planning that I get to facilitate, I wanted to know and have a plan to present around that piece of land as we're considering the scope of our long-range facility planning. So that land is currently zoned ARL, which is agricultural resource land, and currently, we cannot use that land for school, and we can't even use it for school facilities. So I saw in a former facility planning document that it said we could use it for transportation office, for example, but it cannot be used for that purpose. And so I wondered, what does it take to get the property rezoned, if that's something we'd be interested in? So I just gathered the information on that and wanted to bring it to you here. When I spoke to an expert on this, he said, "It's a long shot, but here's what it would take," and it was really two steps. First, it would need to go from agricultural resource land to R10, and then it would need to go, and I'll explain what that is, then it would need to go from R10 to the siting of rural schools. And it needs to go through both of those in order for us to build a school. So the first petition would be to go from ARL to R10, and R10 allows mobile homes, single-family homes, two-family housing. Those aren't things that we want or need. They just get us to a potential endpoint of being able to build a school there. The window for petitioning for rezoning from ARL to R10 opens only every two years, and it's open July 1st to July 30th, 2020. So if we want to be in this two-year rotation, and I don't know that we do, but if we do, we need to act by July 1st through July 30th, 2020. And then the city council decides if they're going to approve that request. If that gets approved, then I think it's an even more uphill battle, but we could go, we could petition to go from R10 to the siting of rural schools, and that would be in order to build a school. And there are several criteria for siting of rural schools, and the expert that I was talking to said there are also advocates who press against siting for rural schools, because they want to preserve the land. So he said, "When that occurs, it drives up the cost of just fighting that battle, and it lengthens the time of fighting that." So what I wondered from you is, is this something you want me to begin to move forward on? This is just the first presentation, so I want to give you time to think about it, but I wanted to share with you what I've learned so far. And if so, we have to July 1st through July 30th to decide if we want to aim for that first round of petitions, which is to go from agricultural resource land to R10.
But what, if you would change, if you would rezone just the soccer field, it would also rezone the Lions' Club?
I don't know. I have the plot of land, and I'll need to look at, is the Lions' Club on district property, or is it on its own property?
No, it's on its own.
So I don't know.
The fire department owns a piece, school district, and the Lions' Club.
For only the school district's boundaries? That's what we looked at. So we looked at the actual perimeter of the school district, how that's zoned, and then we would petition to rezone just the school district's boundary.
Then you would have to rezone any other property on the school side or across the street, all that's zoned as agriculture?
I don't think so, but I'll ask.
Could it, would it rezone everything in the area?
I can't imagine I would be allowed, we, as a district, would be allowed to petition to rezone other people's property?
Yeah, but you'd be, that's kind of rigid. They'll let you rezone just yours and not the whole area that's agriculture right now. You would rezone it, and then anybody in that area, the taxes go up, because now they're not agriculture. They'll be, they'll be basically R1, so the taxes shoot up. Allah. But you'd have a problem with the Lions' Club, and you have a problem with the people across the street that own that property, and Baxter's. Because now, it would be, you could tear Baxter's down and build houses, and that little, what's on the corner there? It used to be a...
It's a Grange.
It's a Grange. The Grange is on the corner. They'd rezone them, too.
It's private, yeah.
It's private, I don't know.
I'm interested in discovering more about this rezoning. I think there's no harm to find out more information about any complications, or even discovering, like, what are our costs?
The cost initially, for part of the petition, is $500 for a piece of the petition, $2,500, but for the consultant, he said, because people fight it, that as he moves organizations through the process, it has gone up to $10,000.
And that's not to even ensure, or to actually get that zone changed, so that we could potentially use it? That's just cost.
There's no guarantee.
Right.
In fact, he said the whole thing's a long shot, because the siting of rural schools is, I think that's a pretty tough.
Then, if I'm not mistaken, you have to notify the neighbors around you that you're trying to go out to rezone, and they might come out and fight you.
Yeah, I wanted to bring it to you to say, we, it has value as soccer fields. I mean, it's a great play space for kids. It provides recreational area for kids. And so I'm certainly not pressing or recommending that we rezone, but I did want to find the information out as we're looking at our long-range facility planning, so we know how it's zoned, how it can be used as we consider our, our.
There's no, there's no harm to get the information, get the knowledge, and see what the cost, what we have to do. Because I know it takes a lot to rezone, a lot of hoops you got to jump through, because that's in Pierce County. And you get, the county got to get the, give the okay, and they don't want to give up any form of land.
I think that it's just extremely challenging to, like what you said, to rezone and deal with, you know, with Pierce County and such, but we're in a situation right now where our schools are growing, and we need to explore other opportunities. This is land that we own as a district, so we should discover that, because if we're spending $10,000, I mean, that's a lot of money, but, I mean, you think about putting a new school and having kids in classrooms that, you know, that are going to provide them with better instructional space. Like, I think that we should continue to discover more about, you know, the rezoning. And then also, I think that we should also understand what the risk is. Like, what is, how much risk do we put our district in if we rezone it as well? And I think, once we understand that risk, we can make a better decision to continue to move forward.
And what kind of risks?
I'm going to use the microphone.
Oh, yes.
Well, I'd like to know, for instance, the cost, what does that cost look like? Like, give us the higher numbers, we can understand what that's going to cost.
He says $10,000 is the high number.
And then also, we've been need to understand community as well. We need to hear comments from the community, and I think we just need overall more information about the rezoning process. But we do own the property, so we should discover. We need to build a new school, and that would be, in my eyes, the perfect location for us to have a new school.
I also want to know, can we rezone just that one spot? Do we have to rezone the whole, the area drawn out? What, are we going to rezone everything? Or can we rezone just the one cutoff, which I don't, I'm not sure you can? You might take all that one side, and I don't know. This question, you probably want to ask a consultant. Who's a Pierce County representative in that area? Did he talk to Pierce County and say, "Is something that Pierce County was interested in?" Because they'll tell you right off the bat, "You can do it, but no, we're not going to do it." You can go through all these hoops, and they'll tell you right off the bat, "Nah, that's not going to make it." So they'll be honest with you, to be honest, is it a long shot? "Yeah, probably." Or they'll say, "No, it's not a long shot," or they'll tell you, "Yes, it's a long shot." But like I said, it's more for the consultant to go out and research.
We're an advantage, too, because we own the property. It's not like we're a developer just trying to buy people's property, not knowing county regulations or zoning issues. So, and I would believe that our city would be in favor. I would only hope that our city would be in favor for us to build a new school on our property. So let's just get some more information on that.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think more information, more information would be critical, and if we're not able to use it, then what are our options? Can we sell it back to somebody? And also, before we make significant investments in maybe trying to have this rezoned or finding another purpose for it, do we, do we need it? Would this be the place that we would build another school? Or do we have other options in other spaces that would be prioritized higher than this one? So make sure it's going to be worth, going through the effort of rezoning, putting out that cost, and that open-ended $10,000, hopefully it's only $10,000. I'd want to know that, okay, this, maybe this property would be our top priority for building a new school, and then that risk is different.
I was just saying, also, we can look at a special use permit, allow us to build a bus, a bus barn out there. They got those, too, that can give you also. It'll just be for that property's own, just for, like, building, you have to build a bus barn. You couldn't build a school, you'd have to build a bus barn. They can give you a special permit to do that. But like I said, the cost, I don't know.
And I would also like to know, all these new developments that are happening in our community, can we use those impact fees to help us pay for some of this rezoning? Maybe that could be an option as well.
I don't think we can, but I'm going to get a definitive answer, but I don't think we can.
You could always ask, just to say, "No."
Where does, where would the funding, I'd be curious to know where would the funding come from? Good. Thank you for looking into this.
And we talked about this before, about that land, and I like how you discovered some opportunities there, so thank you for doing that.
Anything else? I'll gather more information. This was just the first conversation, the first wave of information gathering, but I wanted to bring it to you right away, and then I'll gather more information as well. Character heroes. So at our Board advance, the Board said that you wanted to nominate two students each month as character heroes, and then do yard signs, where the students will come to Board meeting, get recognized. The person who nominated them will come speak about them, and then put yard signs, you know, in their yard. So you can see what the yard sign mock-up looks like. Very nice work, Tara, thank you. And you also see character hero nominations for students in Board jobs. So tonight, we can pick our two students, and then what I wanted to know from you is, moving forward, how did you want to continue to pick the new students? Are we going to do it at the Board work session prior to the next regular Board meeting? Although that doesn't always work, because we don't always have a Board work session. Do one or two Board members want to take turns each month, and you pick the two students each month? So I'm wondering how you want to select those students moving forward. So we have two jobs tonight. One is, we get to pick the two students who are our character heroes, and then how we're going to continue to pick students in the future.
This is extremely hard.
It is.
We have some amazing students in our district. Extremely hard.
I would like, you know, at least get the community, get the community member involved in picking the students, not just at the Board. Is that possible?
Have who pick?
No, like, you can have two Board members plus a community member, and the community actually decide who's going to be that person.
However you, however you want to do it.
Because then you can't say it's the Board, just the Board decision. It's a community decision also. First, we can deal with it, then we can work on the second one.
I have one that stood out to me. Oh, so one of the students that stood out to me in the nominations was Nico Rosendale. I loved that he worked to repair the OMS band instruments. And I just, I just think that those efforts benefited not just him and his faculty, but really, the whole school is going to benefit from that work. And it's difficult. I think it's a hard task to repair band instruments. They're technical and complicated. I'm sure he had to learn a lot along the way. So I thought that one stood out to me. Actually, he earned the money to have the OMS band instruments repaired, so maybe he didn't repair them himself, but he helped fund that.
He did help repair. He also worked all summer helping repair the instruments, so he would write.
Oh, yeah. Like, I thought he did it, and then I read that second line. So Nico's nomination stood out to me.
Taking off on your comment about noticing how something stands out, I will say, what stood out to me is, and I cannot pronounce the last thing, but it's the last one on us, Jalen.
Thank you.
Just the fact that as she is interacting daily with the food service team, that she is exhibiting that kindness that we're all looking for by asking how they are and complimenting people. And outside of another functioning entity that does volunteer work, just seems to be the student's behavior on a daily basis with the people that she's surrounded with at that time, and I thought that that was something of note. And I thought that that was something of note. But honestly, I really don't know how to go forward choosing these. I think, I think we might need to have a little bit of a...
The great thing is, they all will get recognition, and they'll all be posted on the website. So, they will all get recognized, although you'll, particularly because you initially wanted to do a board student of the month, two board student of the months. We're going to highlight two, but everyone will get recognized and will be on the website, and we'll share them on another list as well.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah. But it is hard to pick two. We're doing the same thing with staff and community nominations, and it is also hard to pick two, two each month there as well.
Y'all are doing a great job, just like...
I do, I love the tree.
Want to pick them all? Do you have to do it by motion, or just can pick?
Just pick.
Just get consent. Cash lots.
Can I pick Nico?
Nobody wants to talk.
Nobody wants to, if we pick one, then we're not picking the other. So it doesn't feel quite right. But they're all going to get recognized, so I'm excited about that. Nico stood out to me, as I said, when I read through them earlier. And if you could be one of them, that'd be awesome.
If you had one to pick, which one would you pick?
Nico. That's what I just said.
Oh, okay.
If I have to pick only one. I liked, I also, Jaylen's also stood out to me as well. So, those two, that'd be wonderful. Unless somebody wants to point out another one.
I want to thank Debbie Lombardo, because she nominated Alina Lombardo, Maria Smith, Jacob Lombardo, and Joseph Maxfield. And I'm super, super proud of our students. They dedicated so many hours to support our community. And this is extremely, extremely hard to decide. For myself, what stood out for me the most was Jaylen. Just because she just dedicates her compassion and her kindness just freely. And it's amazing to see that the food service team nominated her. And most of the time during lunch, ours kids just want to socialize. So it's really nice to hear that a student is so giving of her time and helpful. That means a lot. So I'd say we are, can we just say a go for Nico and Jaylen then, for this particular?
Yes.
You know. No.
Oh, you wanted to say something else?
No, I'm just guessing.
Oh, okay.
I thought for call medicine, okay? Those two would be fine on mine, in my book.
So, how do you...
These are all...
Yes, they're all going to be memorialized on the website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it in line. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Thank you. So how would you like to select students moving forward?
I'd say have two board members and a community member, if you can, make recommendations and bring it to the board. And the board, because they're going to tell us why they picked those two, and why they stand out.
So are you guys going to, do you want to reach out to a community member and let me know how you want it done? And I will...
We can have a different one either, or volunteer, or... That means we have to select a community member, and then select two students, and have the picking kind of rotate around the board? Two board members and a community member?
Maybe we can have our committees look at our nominations, and then they can just decide on who they pick, and then bring it all to us.
You could do that, because you have a board member on that committee, right?
Yeah, you have board members, you have community members.
And that way, you can bring that to the board, and then say, well, this is why we think we picked, this is why we picked those two. And then tell us why we picked them, if they want to make another decision. Still give us the list, but this is why we picked those two, but you just did not...
Are you talking about a separate committee, or the...
No, the committee is...
The district, you're there.
My thought is, I was really excited to be able to participate in character heroes as a board. So that's one thought. And I also think those committees have really tall orders and a lot on their plate. So while I like the idea of involving more people, I'm excited to be a part of this too. So I think it's something that the board, that we can recognize these students. I like that idea.
How about two board members on the staff?
Either way, I'm happy, I would love to work with staff members. I would love to work with community members. But I just want to make sure we have people involved and wanting to volunteer for this.
I'm sure some community members would love to volunteer.
Yeah, yeah. So that would be wonderful.
And probably just add another committee, even.
Yeah, we could receive the nominations beforehand, like we did here, and then we could each review them, and then with a community member, and then make recommendations.
If you want to do it in a way like that, everybody could sign up for a month.
Yeah.
Pull in a community member, bring it back and say, here's who you looked at, and...
Who's the four people, five people that we think each of you stand out because of this?
Yep.
And then we're not asking people to come and do presentations to the board and see why they picked, because that's a lot to ask.
Yeah, right.
A lot of commitment, a lot of commitment.
I think also, the pressure, I mean, these students are amazing kids, and the pressure is pretty intense. It's nice to have an outside perspective to help us. Because I don't want to exclude a child, like, it just feels bad. Like, they're exceptional children, and they deserve to be highlighted. And like you said, they will be highlighted, but for some reason, in my core, it's still kind of stained. So like what Stanley was saying, it's good to have an outsider come in and help us decide.
And we get the community involved, it's just not us.
Sure.
So you can't go, like, say, well, just the board picked it, why? It's a community member that gave the decision also. Get the word. There you go.
So, who would like to do November then? Who wants to take the lead on that?
Carrie will.
Perfect, December.
Wait, I need two, two board members. Yeah, Jennifer.
There you go.
I like how you nominated her. December.
Simmons could have busy for me.
We don't know who our board members will be, actually. So why don't we say November, and then let's do the rest of the... So Carrie and Jennifer, you'll take the lead on the November student appointment.
That kind of way to get a community member some kind of message out for a volunteer.
Are you going to, wanting to do like an all-call, or a volunteer?
And that way, you can get a nominee, more than one person. You can say, okay, you can do a November, or if you have a December, January, February. If you get enough people, you can put a different person in a slot each month.
Yep.
So that'd be great.
Is that something that can be put maybe on the website? How you first put the nominations, request for nominations? Is that something that could go out on the website, saying the board is looking for your help, you know?
Yeah.
As part of this, we need community volunteers to sign that.
That'd be good.
That'd be awesome. Let's get the community involved.
Yep, perfect.
This is really hard, Marcy.
I know, it was such a great idea.
I know, it's so hard. It's so hard.
They come down the paper like, oh. Any more questions?
Okay, Carrie and Jennifer are going to take November, and we'll do an all-call for community volunteers who want to join in selecting the board's two students of the month. And we'll get in front of a November board meeting, so that they can join us and be recognized at the next board meeting.
All right, moving on to C, first read. To read the policy that we need to read. Oh, we have any questions? Get to Bonnie. She can ask to answer all questions. This is the first read, you will have a second time to read it. So you want to go to you?
They come to me, or me and Bonnie, and then I shuffle them out to Salt and, or me, depending on who, whose area they fall in, and then we answer those questions.
Well, we should, yeah, we don't want to bother the Salt team, so we'll just ship it out to you.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Email to you and Bonnie. Then you'll get back to the board member, because they, you know, they're busy. Not that I say they're not busy, but too many emails, get lost.
Yeah, it comes to me and Bonnie, and then I shuffle it out to the Salt member who it relates to, which might be not, or somebody else. And then we get those, get that information, bring it back. And we want to share it publicly at our meeting, to make sure we get you the answers. And we also know that questions come up in the moment. And so sometimes you can't get it to us ahead of time, because there's conversations that happen, or you think of something in the moment, and then it's time too. Because you know we'll just say, if we can't answer it, we'll just bring the information back.
So with this particular batch of documentation, that literally took me probably two and a half nights to read, because, yeah. So... Overwhelming. If we still have comments... If we still have comments or questions on this, is it still okay after the fact that it's not? I mean, I have a couple of notes in the, and we're going to be seeing these again before anything happens.
You have a second read, that's the second read.
So it's first read, so feel free to ask any questions you have tonight, too. And the second read comes at a regular board meeting. And if, and there's been times, like the last, there was one related to athletics, that the board said, it's at second read, and we're not ready. We pulled it out, and it kept coming back to board work session, and it kept, we kept answering questions around it and working it until it was ready. So, if it's not ready to move forward, we just pull it, keep working on it. So please ask any questions you have, we are here to answer your questions.
First read is basically to get the questions to Bonnie and Marcy, so they can go to the Salt team and answer, and get the correct answer. Then it comes to the board, and, you know, she'll let us know what the question was, and we'll have the same request.
In that vein, then, I just did have a couple. One's just a comment. In the guidance and counseling markup... Sorry.
I just don't want to get him.
Thank you. In the guidance and counseling markup, there was a portion of that that said, and other things in regards to the job, I was wondering if there was a job description for a school psychologist? And if so, can that be referred to, rather than just have "and other things"? So when it talked about, oh, gosh. I can't remember exactly where it says, but guidance and counseling markup.
Oh, it's in the third paragraph. It's like second, actually, first sentence. Of the third paragraph, in the blue. So it says, "The school counselor works with developing and leading a comprehensive guidance and counseling program to focus on the academic, career, personal, and social needs of all students." So second sentence. "School psychologists carry out special education evaluation duties, among other things."
Exactly. And I was just kind of wondering if instead of having a very general, "among other things", as people are wanting clarity and transparency, if there is a job description that could be pointed to? Yes, yes, exactly, that is that of having the "and other things". And we all know, as older people who've been working for a long time, the other duties as assigned by supervisor, and how vague that can be. I'm just wondering if in a policy, we could have something not specific enough to spell it out through the whole document, that can be referred to. Yes, exactly.
As you might know, Chris works directly with the psychologists in the district and human resources, and I'm looking at a job description, which I just pulled up. It does say in the title, it needs some revising, so I'm happy to partner with Chris and gather some of his expertise to update that a little bit, and certainly that could be tweaked in the job.
Because for the school, for the school counseling, the comprehensive, the comprehensive school counseling framework is really, for me, that's really clear. You know, there's four sections of it, and so we can be really clear in regards to that expansive, but clear. So maybe at least know where to go to, when, because NASP, which is the National Association for School Psychologists, has a school psychology framework. And so at least people know where to go to, to see where the school psychologist does, just like they can the guidance and counseling.
I think that's perfect, that's kind of just what I was looking for. So it exactly does this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had sent a few things in advance of the meeting, and I think just the one that stuck out to me was the phys ed requirement. And Marcy said he was going to look into that. Yes.
What number is that? And then I went to you.
It's the high school graduation requirements, policy 2410.
So for policy 2410, Carrie sent in a question about...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, wrong policy?
It's not the markup one.
It was a wrong graduation one.
Yeah, it was.
Credits.
Yes, I think it is...
waiver of credits.
Policy 2410.
For clarification around the physical education requirements.
It wasn't the one I just pulled up. It's 2410, page three.
Was it procedure, not policy?
Yes, procedure, I think. That's hard. Procedure, yes. And it's just, it's item G, two credits are required, health and physical fitness education. 0.5 credits for health, 1.5 for fitness and physical ed, and less weight.
So that lacked clarity. And so we... And so we updated it.
Okay, thank you.
Three times since then, I think.
Perfect, I'm like, is that plus?
So we're hoping that, and actually, we worked toward parallel construction from item C, social studies, because that one was worded so clearly. So we used that frame to rewrite the health and fitness one to add clarity. So thank you for that question, or that suggestion.
It is clear to me now, thank you.
I'll try to send you mine by the Tuesday. I'd love to read them yet, paragras. I can get that block time off of it. Just come back from the kitchen, just slats it out.
Any other questions or discussion around the first reading?
What do you want?
Strategic planning meeting update. So what I will not do is rec, relive all of you, but I did want to recap our strategic planning meeting for the boards. You could see the direction we're headed in, the scope of the work, and what we're engaging in, and where we landed after our first, after our first meeting, because it will be bringing back a recommendation to the board that really does cast a vision, and we know it has to be your vision. And so I just want to make it flexible where we're working, and you're constantly updated, you're influencing our work, we're bringing that to the work of the committee. You're influencing our work. We're bringing that to the work of the committee. So moving pretty quickly, you have a packet of handouts. All of these will be available electronically. Because we'll be sharing, be sharing the work of... We'll be sharing the work of the team as we go, but to give you a very quick overview. We talked about our purpose of the team and then I was trying to look forward at what the work, the trajectory of the work might be as we move throughout the year. So in October, we were developing some shared understanding around current research and requirements and community input to begin to look at our vision and direction and then come back in November and say, so what would that really look and sound like in our system with our kids? Then in December, looking at the big goals of the system and then what the evidence might be around those big goals. What are the lead measures for those goals? How are we going to be keeping score or our data, a data dashboard around those goals? What's our cadence of accountability for those goals in the different layers of the system? And then pulling all that together to the actual strategic plan document, which we would ultimately share with you and recommend that with you on May seventh at the board work session or... So for this team, we shared our current vision. We looked at community, staff and student input. And then we looked at the top comments and the themes from those, dug into those and then said what resonated from that. And we pulled the big ideas and charted those of that community, staff and student input. Then we looked at research and requirements, including the research around redefining ready, how that aligns with our district ends currently. The framework that OSPI is moving to, this is brand new. We're probably one of the first groups who have seen it. So the ways that they're working toward pathways that lead to careers, apprenticeship, military and learning after high school. And looking at the ways that schools are graded, with the Washington School of Education framework. So considering all of those things, we pulled the big ideas out, we said what resonated and then captured those big ideas again on these terms that were gonna be filters for our future work. Then we said, so we have community input, we have what's required. What kind of thinkers do we want students to be? So we looked at the ways that kids are thinking, engaging with the content, getting information from lots of different sources and being critical thinkers, thinking creativity, using collaboration and communication.
People were thinking this was the best part of the meeting.
Then we said what resonates from that and we captured some of the big ideas from this, from this element. What we, then we said, another thing that came up in the community input, in fact, was one of the top things, was around building character. So we watched the video clip, John Olin can be here in person. So he sent me a video about the why building character and social, emotional learning and supporting students in this way matters. Soft skills are the new heart and skills. So after that, we captured some big ideas up here. And again, this isn't for us to go through and redo as a team, but I just want to give you a really, a brief overview of the work. So then we looked at the themes that emerged and really resonated with us around the input, around research and requirements, character and developing thinkers. And we came back to our own vision statement, all students ready for college careers in life. And we said, how are these things reflected in our vision statement or how are these ideas not reflected in our vision statement? And this is, these are just the ideas that came up among the team. Are we really gonna say all students? Because something that really surfaced was this idea around each student's passion, each student's choice for what they want after high school. And it does not have to be an emphasis on college. It's an emphasis on what their passion is and what their purpose is after high school. So instead of saying all students, which sort of says everyone needs to do some, the same thing, even changing our language to each student. Because passion and character and ways of thinking rose to the top, how is that gonna be reflected here? Instead of saying college careers in life, they sound like you have to pick something. And that's not what came up in community feedback. And it's not what comes up in the research is just picking one and you're stuck on this one trajectory. But there's multiple pathways to get to the future that students are choosing. So this is just our first reflection as we looked at all of these pieces of information and input and considering what that might mean for a future vision statement. So that's where we are now after just our first meeting. And our next meeting, we're gonna say, what is this vision? How might it really look and sound if it lived every, in our schools and in our lives? So I'll keep you posted along the way. I'm glad I wanted to give you just a brief update on that. Carrie and Jennifer, thank you for being a part of that team. And please add, I know it takes probably a lot of the highlights, but if you'd like to add anything, please.
Oh, I appreciated, I appreciated you leading a thoughtful process, even for it being just our first meeting. And knowing that we were absorbing a lot of detail from the community and the regulations and state requirements and just having all of that as brain food for us and then taking it back to our vision statement. I just thought that the process was very thoughtful and well-led by you and the group. I just enjoyed the mix of people. We had community members, staff members, Jennifer and I were fortunate. Councilman Gunther was there, so it was just a good mix of people. So looking forward to moving through it all together.
I want to add that it was great really listening to, for instance, like our middle school principal, David. Just hearing his insight about what his students face. Because we forget that. We forget what it feels like to be thirteen-year-old. And their challenges are a lot different than what we know of, like in a primary school or one in high school. So I was like, really good to listen to know. And then also Clint, he highlighted about measures, like how our districts are measured these days. And that was so important for me to learn because we hear, you know, community members are wondering, how do we measure your district? You know, we're not getting those distinctions like we did back in two thousand and thirteen. But as we realize, each child is different. Each child has a different pathway and it's not determined by a test score. We cannot determine a child's future by a test score anymore. And what I learned was that in the past, we measured students by test scores and that pigeonholed just a certain group of kids. But what we realized is that what really matters is kids who have passion, they seek other pathways. And now the state is measuring our success by graduation rates. And what I've learned about our district since two thousand and fifteen, we have increased our graduation rates by five percent. And we're only gonna keep increasing those numbers. And I like that a lot because each child is so different. And even if they have a two-point-eight or if they don't take an AP class, maybe they take an AP class and they don't get a three on their testing, they're still going to be successful. And as a district, we did a great job. But thank you, Marcy, for leading the planning meeting, because I learned a lot and I really appreciate that.
Good, a good group. And we even talked about, by saying college careers in life, even putting the word college first makes it seem the most important. So I mean, just, it was a really good reflective conversation about what are we communicating with our vision? And does it really reflect our values and heart and what we want for Ording kids and what they want for themselves?
Any other questions? Would the board comment?
One item, something I recently learned is PTA picked their watchdog date. And it is October fifteenth, six-thirty to seven-thirty. At the board advance meeting, you mentioned was, is there an opportunity to piggyback on an existing event and highlight the portable? Let people come in and do tours or somehow bring people into that because our community contributed and been building that? And so getting this date, this could be a possible event that we could piggyback on if that is of interest to the board. So that would be October fifteenth.
That might be a good way too to support their event, maybe more people could come with an opportunity to look at the portable. So I'm interested. It's the fifteenth.
I'm game. Yeah. Okay, well then we'll work on a, I ran it by Tara to see if it was feasible for her too. So Tara and I will huddle up on a communication plan around this and we'll work with the school to come up with a plan for the event.
Will there be a tie-in? I mean, is it a good opportunity for them too or will they be busy doing the watchdogs at the event?
Well, I think...
I don't want to add.
Yeah, I think we'll host it. And we would probably go either in front of or behind the watchdog event. We will compete with it.
Yeah, good.
Thank you for following up on that and for not you.
Any other, any other comments?
I did, so I watched the parade last night. I didn't know that Marcy took me to like a really popular corner in Ording, but that was the most like fascinating corner because we had so many citizens waving and saying hi. We had Ording police pull up right next to us really fast and furious. And then I saw Carrie on a float. It was just really fun to watch our students just celebrate and be so involved. Like, that was amazing for me to watch. And the weather was, it was fair. It was, I mean, it wasn't super cold and it wasn't raining, so that was really nice. And then Tara came out and she was sick. She still came out with her camera and had a big smile and made me laugh, made us both laugh and was running down Ording just to capture the shot. I can't wait to see the video. But thank you for all the hard work that you do. But it's really fun to watch our students and our teachers and community members like you, like, get so involved. So thank you very much. That was really fun.
Any comments? We'll be going to the Zack's session for fifteen minutes discussing negotiations.
Uh, no, it's...
Bargaining?
No. Performance of an employee.
Performance of an employee will not come out making, will just come out to join the meeting, no decision will be made. Thank you.